I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
So, motion by Cindy, second by Randy to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approve with a consent agenda.
Approve with a consent agenda.
Motion by Janelle.
Second.
Second by Randy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Now we'll have a public hearing on the 2015 budget. Fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015. Is there any discussion on the resolution?
I've received no written or oral comments.
I can't make the motion.
I'll make the motion that the hearing be closed. Say it.
Motion by Jane, second by Randy to approve the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the hearing is closed. Okay, now we got to pass the resolution.
I'd make a motion to pass the FY 2015 budget.
It's Resolution 1405.
1405.
Motion by Jane, second by Jane to approve the Resolution 1405. Notice I didn't say over. And this will be a roll call vote. Randy?
Yep.
Justin is absent.
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Jane?
Yes.
Okay, we have four votes in favor. Justin absent, abstain, no, absent, I'm sorry, I'm going place. Motion has passed. Okay, now we approve the fire station use for congregate meal sites. Oh, there it is.
Do you really need to say anything?
Are you just going to pass it?
Well, I'd like to.
One way or the other, I can either answer one way or the other.
We have a couple of blanks there, so we need to fill those in.
Judy, you've looked at this and are there, do you have any questions about what we've laid out?
The only one I have is, number one, sometimes I'll be gone, like if I have, Melvin happens to take me on a patient, whatever. Or he has a doctor's appointment that I go with him. Lillian will be my substitute, so she will doing my duties those days that I'm gone. And that's not in here, so I just want to make sure that was okay with you. Otherwise, the rest of it, except for the blanks down here where they want to know about appliances, who's going to take care of appliances if they go putts or...
What about, like, the bathroom supplies? Do you, will you provide that or...
That's a decision that nobody's, we've not talked about.
Your program does not pay for that.
No. When I was here, Nancy supplied it in the community building.
The city supplied it.
Okay.
I ordered it.
Same way with the garbage bags. The city supplied the garbage bags for downstairs.
You will continue with the city on that item?
Uh...
I'm asking.
Well, my, can I jump in here?
Yeah.
My thoughts are, I don't have a problem providing stuff for 60-plus, but I'm questioning whether we should raise the monthly rent.
And I don't have any, I can't tell you yes or no. That would have to go to the board. And how much were you thinking?
Because 82 a month is what you pay now.
Maybe a flat $100 a month.
I have no idea, I'd have to...
I have to go to a board meeting Monday, so I can...
Just because it's been so long?
Yeah. Yeah. And I guess I didn't realize either how much we were providing, you know, for the group. Which I don't have a problem with providing stuff, but I was just thinking maybe to get a little more money back. Because we were providing the cleaning too.
And you do that now?
We do here.
So, do you know, do other congregate meal sites pay rent on their stuff?
Some of them do and some of them, some of them the city furnishes it. And some of them pay for it. Like, this has always been, what, 80 dollars?
Eighty-two.
Yeah, it's always been the, as long as I've been there, and I've been there for, ever since Betty Bult was here.
Well, it says here since 1980.
This one is 34 years.
And what if 60-plus comes back and says they can't swing the 100, is that a deal breaker?
No.
No?
Not for me.
Okay.
Well, she's a... I'm just curious, you know, if that could happen.
Well, let's, let's then provide the garbage bags and paper towels and bathroom supplies and...
Because we're going to have to do the maintenance on all the appliances too, right? That's our responsibility?
That's what we discussed. I have no idea what the arrangements are. I don't know if the firemen own it, I don't know if the city owns it.
Well, the firemen own it, but since you're going to be in there, I'm thinking it's probably going to be more our responsibility.
I would think that the firemen, that the association owns the appliances?
Or, yeah.
Then I would think that the association...
So if I have a problem, I should get a hold of one of the firemen and say, hey, your refrigerator's kaput.
Get the mirror out and get the other one.
Quick!
Yeah, because it really wouldn't be what you, you know, the refrigerator you can't control. I mean, I want to be fair, but, I mean, if it's association appliances, then it's the association you contact. Who would be the contact person, Randy?
Randy Goose, I would imagine.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with them though.
No.
They're all pretty up to date.
Yeah, we thought so too at Thanksgiving or Christmas, down here with the brand-new stove.
Yeah. We were, what, three weeks without one?
Uh-huh.
Ours don't get abused that much.
Well, it's going to be getting used every day.
It's not going to hurt it though. Most food comes in warm already anyway, right?
Yep, yep.
It does get used though.
Well, yeah, but that's not going to hurt it. Probably better to use it a little bit now.
Well, it probably is.
Okay, so on eight, we can, maintenance items identified should be reported to Randy Goose or Randy Shulley.
All of those items, like hot water heater?
I would say chief or assistant chief. I want to put names in that.
Chief?
No names.
Chief and assistant chief if I have a problem.
Yeah.
That's a good question. You ever brought up the hot water heater, is that city or...
I would think that would be the city's responsibility.
Why would?
Okay. And inside, outside, is this both? Do we have another blank? Yes. So, Lillian, you're going to go and ask about raising your, getting additional funds?
And their meeting is next Monday.
Okay.
So in order to expedite things, we could leave that 82 dollars until we get a affirmative answer from their association?
I'm okay with that.
Actually, I would approve it with the 100 in it and come back if they don't approve it. Because that makes it a request from the council rather than a would you please?
Okay. Let's put the 100 in it.
Okay.
And then clean down there, what, twice a month? Sounds okay to me.
Is that what they do now?
No, they're supposed to be in there once a month down there.
She cleans every Monday downstairs.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, every Monday she's down there cleaning. But that's, that's not a deal breaker. If you want to just do two, that's fine, I can sweep the other two weeks and we're not real messy. They're not real messy.
Clean up her yard every day, we clean her...
Let's try it with two and we see how, if it's not workable, then we'll get back to it.
But I, I do want to know if, if it's not getting done.
Okay. Because Donida does a really good job.
Yeah, and it won't be the same people.
I'll be able to tell.
Yeah.
I'll be able to tell.
It won't be the same people, and we haven't put them on a regular schedule, but I think we'll put them on a first and third week of the month schedule.
Okay.
And try to see if we can make that a little better, because we've had a couple of issues down there where it hasn't quite gotten done like it should, so...
Okay.
We need to just stay in communication with me about how well that works out.
Okay, I will.
Because if it doesn't work out, we'll find someone else.
Oh, I'll let you know.
Yes, I know you will. [laughing]
Okay, is, is any going to be buying a snow making machine?
Huh? Why?
The city of Auburn will maintain the snow.
Yeah, keep it scooped.
Did I really have to put in there if it snows?
Wow.
Technically, he's correct though. We maintain the streets, not the snow. Good point.
Maintain the snow, also maybe we have to get some snow making machines.
We know, we know what she meant.
We got it, we got it.
I don't have an aspirin, actually.
We might need it.
I have some in the drawer for just meetings like this.
Okay, on the cleanup, what did we decide, twice a month on this?
Yeah.
She said first and third weeks.
Or second and fourth or...
Just twice a month.
Yeah. But try to set up something a little regular, a little more structured for the people that are doing it, other than, what we've told them is their meeting is this day, get in there, make sure it's clean before they go in, and I don't know that that always happens like it should, so... But they are aware that this could happen and that we would want to increase their duties, and they were very hopeful and wanted increased duties, so I think it'll be okay.
Okay, now, are we all kind of with the fire station use?
Would it be possible, and this just as a courtesy for the fire department, and I wasn't asked this by anyone, but could we, Nancy had mentioned some time ago, maybe even putting a committee together. I think we don't need to do that, that's time-consuming, but just as a courtesy, could we put these rules, distribute these rules to the, to the fire department? And see, they may come up with some really good points that we just, not in contesting this, but additional points that need to be added. Could we go ahead and approve the congregate meal site usage guidelines and consider the fire station overall usage policy a draft and get some comment from the fire department? It might just be considered a gracious thing, you know, a courtesy thing is probably a better term. That's all.
How do we incorporate this into the fire department rules?
Separate it. Let's, we've, we've set up the congregate meal site usage guidelines, and then next month after the fire station people have, department has an opportunity to look at the proposed language that we have put together, that they come back and tell us their reaction to it, and that doesn't mean we won't go with what we've got, it just gives them a courtesy to, to see the, they, they know the building is ours.
So they haven't seen this yet?
No.
Point of information only, okay? The, the first four points at the top is information that came directly from the minutes of the meeting when all of this got decided.
You mean last month's meeting?
No, 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 years ago meeting when this got decided. This is the information that came from those minutes. That's where that came from. Now, that, that's not to say that, you know, we don't need, I really, and I, if I remember right, when this all happened, we were trying to do some kind of a memorandum of understanding with the fire department about this whole policy. Council did something tentatively, sent it down to them, and it never came back.
Okay.
We've done that twice, and it just today dawned on me that we did that. Now, but this is from the minutes. Now, is it bad policy to give them an opportunity to look at this? No. Especially with the, you know, because there's, really, the only thing there is really to, to change and approve is the congregate meals using it. But, and I, but I think they should have input to make sure that we have this complete as well, so...
I do too, so...
Okay, go show them one, sir.
Yeah, and, so I would make a motion to approve the congregate meal site usage guidelines with all the blanks filled in. Separate from the fire station usage policy, which we will present to the fire department or distribute to the fire department and await their comments. But we won't wait very long. No, no response and we move ahead.
What do you plan on being in there, Judy?
I'm going to wait till, at least till after Wednesday, because we have a nurse that comes and checks blood pressures and stuff. I think it'd be a lot easier to tell her where we're going than, because sometimes I don't get her on the phone when I call over to Stewart Memorial. So I'll be here till at least Wednesday, and then I'll probably start moving. I'm not sure when our first meal will be there. I don't know if it'll be Thursday or, depends on how much time.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the congregate meal site guidelines, send that to the fire department, along with the fire station usage, and they are to discuss and approve those or whatever they need to do.
Comment, let's just say comment, because for comment, because the council actually makes or breaks it.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Jane, second by Cindy, and I will repeat what she said.
It took it.
All those in favor say, oh, is there any further discussion on the motion? I'm sorry.
Well, if the meeting's Wednesday, Randy...
That's Wednesday, I'll show them Wednesday night.
Then can someone get a hold of Nancy on Thursday?
Sure can.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So let's say yes?
It's a yes.
It's a yes. It's so difficult. Okay, so when I get ready, come up and get a key from you, or where do I get a key?
Yeah.
Your antique fire truck?
What?
Fire truck, will you have your key on or...
I'll bring out the key down there, if she don't have one.
I have the extra one.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, you can keep it till I get ready. I'm not going to move till at least Wednesday, because the nurse comes, I think it's just a lot easier to tell her when she's here.
Yeah, next time, don't come here.
Don't come here.
Of course, she can come and take my blood pressure.
She would do that.
Some days it might not, she might want to call the ambulance, but you know.
Okay. You need me for anything else?
No.
Thank you so much.
Well, thank you for showing up.
You bet.
Next item, consider the option for the antique fire truck. I understand that the wheels don't turn, or they do turn, but no brakes on it or something?
Can you back the...
There's no brakes. You can back the bad ones off, then it'll move right?
Yeah, like, so the truck can stay in there, just long they back the brakes off, get it over in the corner and...
Just let me know when I get up there, I can back them off.
Good, yeah, that's the only thing is I just need to get it one place there, like I said, just one of those.
You let me know when I...
Backwards stuff, it don't work very good.
Tell me when I go and do it, I'll back them off.
Be just more...
Is it going up to the city shop?
Keep the fire truck.
Where's it going? It's going to stay at the city shop. Okay, yeah. Thank you, Jerry. So, so the bottom line is we can continue to store the antique fire truck at the city shop.
Just long as it...
That you can move it?
It doesn't have to run. I can pull it, push it, whatever it is, but...
Don't rush it.
No. Well, the brakes, I'll get it back off.
You knew what happened, okay.
Why are we keeping the fire truck if it can't run it? We were discussing on getting it running, I thought, last time.
We were, and I've been a little preoccupied, so I didn't get phone call me, but I would do that.
So until, we just hold up, we're going to hold up with that. At the last meeting we talked about it.
Aye.
You forget?
I wasn't here, so I don't...
Consider option for fire truck, what did you say again, Randy?
They were talking about getting that...
We were talking about the last meeting, working on getting it running. We decided to hold up on getting rid of it, you want to get rid of it yet?
Yeah.
Well, if we fix it up so it'll run, then we can use the courageous so forth, otherwise...
That's what we were talking about.
Jump at one or the other, you know, whenever the council decides.
But then, the impression that I got at the last meeting was that it needed, there wasn't room to warehouse it anymore. And so therefore, it sounds like that's all been taken care of. We can keep it where it's at until such time we decide to get it running, if we want to spend the money to do that.
It wasn't the part about there was no room, it just...
You didn't get that.
Couldn't move it.
It just can't move.
Like I said, it's stuck in there, if you, like I said, if you back the brakes off...
I stand corrected.
Kind of moving in and out, yeah, but like I said...
I'll get it more in.
Okay, great.
So you're all unanimous on just keeping it?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, my vote isn't counted.
No, it does not. Sorry. It's the problem with being mayor, you don't get a vote.
Protocol.
Okay, review, consider complaint policy.
As per discussion last month, at the end of the meeting, council wanted time to actually review what was in it, and I guess this is the time if anybody has things they want to change. If not, we'll approve it as it is.
This is, this is the one that's in the handbook now.
Who is the control, ordinance control officer?
You.
Holy, holy.
Well, that was, that was one issue, and then I wonder if we don't want to...
Really go...
For every complaint, let me finish, and then you can jump in. For every complaint that's made, that someone's willing to fill out the complaint form and put down the details and put their signature to it, that complaint form and complaint would be brought before the mayor and the council. I mean, don't you think, I, I, I think people would want that if they go to the trouble, if it's that big of a deal to them.
Yeah.
Okay, well, because it says complaint and complaint form will be reviewed by mayor and ordinance control officers.
The reason it's just now coming to me why that says ordinance control officer is that there are some things that should be reviewed to the sheriff's office.
Oh, directed.
Yeah. That's why it's in that verbiage. Because it wouldn't, some of it doesn't stay in the city, some of it would maybe be referred directly to the sheriff's office.
Shouldn't come before the council, you're saying?
Right. Or something that would go, would be big enough that it would go directly to the city attorney for advice before council got in the middle of it. That, that's the only reason for that terminology, but I don't have any problem if you want to add a point that says all complaints should come before the council at some...
Well, it does say that. Down under, okay, at number three, where it says A, and then you drop down to number two, then it says steps will be taken in a non-violation issue, matters will be directed to the city council.
If, if the simple resolution is not possible, but I think it's important that if someone actually fills out a complaint, that the council knows about that, if appropriate, you could, I mean, if it's not a legal...
We've had some, for example, we've had some dog barking issues where I've said, write it down, and they have. Well, then I just sent them a letter signed by the mayor that said, you've got to make your dog quit barking, and it resolved the issue. So, does that really need to come to council?
Well, I think if somebody fills out a complaint form, that complaint form's...
But if their complaint is satisfied, that simply, this was designed to have a very simple first, non-threatening, non-blow-up-the-town step.
Okay.
Okay? Now, I'm not, I'm not arguing what's right or wrong, I'm saying this was the design at the time. One first step, non-threatening, but that we were going to try not to take any complaints verbally. They had to write a complaint, but then after the written complaint, there was a non-blow-up-the-town first step. Okay? No big issue, no council agenda, no, nothing in the minutes, first step. Now, that doesn't mean that each of you probably at some point, if you come talk to me, aren't going to know about it, but rather than official in-the-minutes kind of stuff, council at that point wanted a first step. Now, it's up to you guys if you don't want that non-confrontational first step.
Could we do this on the complaint form? Could we have, do you want this to come before the council?
It is on there.
Is it checked, checked book?
Yes. Yes. Would you like to attend a council meeting? Yes. We can restate that a little bit, but, you know, the other one, the other question at the bottom is should a citation be issued? Will you testify in court? Well, usually that answer's no. Council can't do anything about most of those kinds of complaints.
Right, I understand, on that kind of category. But attending a city council meeting and making the city council aware of a complaint is two different things.
So we could change that question if you'd like.
Yeah.
I mean...
Do you, do you want the city council to be aware of this?
But you have to keep in mind, and here again, I'm just pointing this out, you have to keep in mind that there would be certain residents who would fill this out insisting that it be at a council meeting just to embarrass the person they're complaining about.
I know, but you...
It might or it might not, you know, and really, do we need to embarrass somebody over a barking dog? Or do, you know, it, I've seen that try to happen, I've seen residents try to do that.
Sure, sure, but...
So, that's why the, that, that's another reason for that initial first step. You know, kind of a, not, not secretive, but a little bit less public, because everything here's on the record and... I don't know, it, it's up to you guys. I, we could, we could put another question in here that said, you know, it, I thought this one...
I guess I want to know if someone has filled out the complaint form to the extent that...
Well, you need to come in and ask.
In and ask for what?
Come in and, come in and ask if any complaint forms have been filled out.
The other thing I used to do years ago was I kept a file of these, and I just set them on the table like I do the bank statements and the bills.
You could do that, you could report out the regulations.
And then you would see everything that I had, but we went so many years without any that I got out of the habit of doing this. And really, the, the only written complaint that we had was from Testrote that started all the other blow-up-the-city things, and so, you know, it's like... But, I mean, I can do that if I get a written complaint, or if you get a written complaint, because this is, this is for you guys as well. It's not just me, you guys, if somebody's complaining to you, you hand them this and say, fill it out and get it to me or to the city clerk. And then those appropriate action will be taken, and I can, you know, it's not a big deal to put them all on the table for you, to read through a file if there are any.
Okay, well, I, I think that's fine, you report them out monthly, and I know that there'll be very many, because some people don't like to throw them out.
It usually ends the thing, usually ends it, but not always.
No, not all, we just turned an example.
And, and most of them I'm able to resolve with the mayor in a letter, and the dog goes away or...
But at least it gives us heads up.
Yeah, we know that that's happened, so if we can have something that...
So, we want to add in here...
So if you send out a letter, you already sent out a letter to someone based on a written complaint, that would be in a file at each person.
Yep, yep.
That's, that's great. I'm good with that.
Okay, so then, then the question on the form that said, how do you feel this complaint should be resolved? Is that adequate then? It's the second long, bunch of long lines.
It's kind of the complainers, up to them if they want to voice their opinion, I guess they can voice it, that'll even happen.
Exactly. But it gives them, it gives them some opportunity to, so you, one thing about it, council then kind of knows how they feel about it for sure.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I don't have any other problem with it.
Okay. Rather than say to them, do you demand council action? No, how do you feel council...
Just notification, like Cindy said, so that you know that someone's...
I can do... I can do that.
Not in the trouble to fill that form out.
Okay. So, are we okay with everything else on it?
The only other thing I'd add is that, that would you like to attend a city council meeting, uh, maybe just in parentheses, put optional? I mean, it's, so they don't, so it's not a requirement for filing a complaint.
Yeah, and most of the people who come in and do this, and I hand them this, and they go, what about that? And I said, it's up to you. But, you know, we, we had, the other one that we had was, um, Donnie Riling and Kent Blessington's camper. You know, that was another one that we tried to resolve before it got to the council level, but Donnie's, you know. Yeah, you know, so it, we just, I don't know, sometimes you can get things handled without making it public if... Yeah, but I'll, I can, all right.
Okay, we got a change on this complaint form, really?
Yeah, we just, just to make the, attending the council meeting optional and to add a line in the procedure that says copies, copies of all formal complaints or written complaints will be distributed to council at, at a meet, at the next meeting.
Following meeting.
Okay, that's takes action.
So, we probably should have a motion to approve with the changes that we made?
Make motion to approve the changes we made.
One second.
Motion by Randy, second by Cindy. Any further discussion on the motion? About the complaint procedure? All the votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And I will make these changes and get new copies to all of you. Probably I'll email them, so then you can save them in a file and you can print it off at any time you want. The form you can print off at any time, and Randy, do you want me to mail you some?
Please.
Sure. You just give them here.
Well.
I got to change them. Well, otherwise I can give them to you next meeting.
No worries. Do whatever you want.
You know, my husband says that to me too.
Just get done.
That's right. It's what he says do, just get to work.
Dates for citywide cleanup day. Question Jerry, do you still want some latex paints to paint soccer fields?
Yeah, latex paint I can.
Okay. And cleaning house.
Doesn't make a difference what color it is. I can line it and, whatever the lines look like, that's what they are.
Okay, back to the, uh, setting the date.
How did we do it last? We had it May last time Nancy.
We had it either in late April or early May, and I used the same template for the poster. And we did one in the fall, and I changed the date and didn't save one of the old ones. So I don't know what date we did it last year.
I think it was in October.
Yeah, the second one was in October, but the May one, the last, I think the last payment I got from anybody for stuff that needed to be paid for to be picked up was like May 1st, so I'm guessing we did it the first week of May.
Yeah, I think May is a better month.
And it feels like our season's going to be late this year.
Yeah, that's what I'm afraid of. So what is that first? About the second week in May, which is so late.
The first Monday in May is the fifth, makes Wednesday the seventh, we always do it on Wednesday, or the fourteenth.
I think that's too late.
The fourteenth might be a little late because.
Getting ready for graduation.
Graduation is the seventeenth.
Yeah, so what else? We go up to seven? Okay, that's fine, yeah.
May 7?
Yep. And we are not going to open the yard waste site until at least the 1st of April, is that about right? Unless the weather'd get really nice.
Well, it's muddy, you won't be able to get in there anyway.
Exactly.
It's probably pretty muddy.
There's a lot of frost in the ground that's got to come out.
Yeah. And we, I'm, I'm, haven't done it, but I will get signage ordered from up, for up there for the rules. We need to post the rules up there, I think. And get signage done, and I'm looking for a lo, if anybody knows a local fencing company so I can get a bid on the fencing. I can't find anybody that's any closer than Fort Dodge.
Who did Lakeview's?
Lakeview. Their city.
Oh, the city did?
Yeah, they used old, old telephone poles and cattle panels.
Oh.
And then spent money on that screen stuff. So, but that's not an option for us.
How many feet do we have?
I think I, I just, what did I figure out? Seven hundred and some feet.
Is it going all the way around or just two sides?
That is two sides, the east side and.
Your.
The north side, just a few feet on the north side.
So there's a fence on the south?
No, that's par, partially on the south. The east side is four hundred and sixteen feet.
I was just going to say, we're not doing the east side?
The east side is four hundred and sixteen feet, and I got this all off of a map on the internet, so.
It's not real accurate.
It's not real accurate, exactly. Until we go out there and flag where we want the fence and get somebody to come look at the project, it doesn't much matter, but... I wanted some kind of an idea so that we knew, at least when we're looking at price per foot or something that, you know. On the north side, from the gate to the east, I figured we needed to put our own fence in there because there was enough of a gap between our fence line and Todd's, correct? That we shouldn't hook into Todd's fence.
You can't hook into his fence, he's going to win with them.
I know, I know. But we could just.
There's an wired one there, right?
Yeah. And if we do that, when that, that side is about two hundred and twenty-five feet. And then that's nothing on the south, but you told me you didn't think anybody could get in on the south anyway.
Can they Randy?
That's what they want, how much trouble they want to go through, I guess.
Yeah, they got to go through somebody's yard to get there. Yeah.
Trees and everything else.
Can they take some fence out?
Yeah. So anyway, I'm working on that, but if anybody knows of a fencing company.
Six-foot hole in there maybe?
And I really think.
Yeah, there's trees dropped down through it now, so they can.
Yeah, six-foot chain link with, I would love to have the extra money to put screening on the east side so the neighbors didn't have to look at it. If we're going to put a fence up, put some screening in it, on it.
Put it there in the wood, long partridges.
Yeah. Yeah, we won't pay for the extra money to put screen up on Partridge's side, but I think we, I think it looked like the lot line and Todd's fence were five or six feet apart, so he probably isn't going to let us put a post over to his fence and, so. Anyway, that's, that's all there is with that.
Now, you, you're talking about his wooden fence, that's, that's his property, we have to.
I know, that's what I said.
Yeah, actually, our fence lane is.
Correctly the other one is.
Is on Todd's property. Our fence lane is actually a little bit solid.
Yeah. I was hoping they were close enough that we could just put a post there and a gate right there and not have to do that north side, but I don't think that's... I think we have to do the north side. So like I said, it's roughly close to seven hundred feet, plus a gate. And we won't have to put all seven hundred feet with screening on it, but, so anyway.
I found out Sac City uses the landfill for their shrubs and trees. And no charge.
No charge even. Isn't that nice?
They just got all that out there.
Yeah, but.
It's one home for people out here.
They should be charged.
Yeah, we'll pay for that.
Yeah.
I brought that up and they did silence, so.
Yeah, you got popular, didn't you?
Yeah, exactly. But yeah, that's, no kidding, because they were talking about, I asked for suggestions on how they regulate, anyway.
Okay, that, that's all there is for that.
I know, I know.
Now, that fencing, you discussed that around your landscaping?
No, that's for another night. That was just information.
Oh, okay. So we're still on a cleanup day?
No, we're done with that.
In case of inclement weather, what do we do? Week before?
No.
Oh.
Told me that day.
Okay.
Your old refrigerator or dishwasher, whatever, can sit on.
Well, I'm not going out there. I'm not going to be recycling.
I didn't mean you personally.
You said dishwasher.
Oh, oh, okay, got it.
Okay, now, let's see. Consider approving landscaping needs from caretaker.
Um, Laura Bilt did this last year, and if you guys are okay with it, she'd like to do it again this year. Um, the only caution I would give you is we're probably going to have to buy some mulch this year.
How many hours did she put in last year?
I don't know.
I, I wondered.
It, I think her.
How did she do that with her kids working with her?
Her kids worked for free.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I wondered how that went.
So, yeah, we're just going to keep her mouth shut.
I got it, I got it.
Um.
Nancy, some of those plants, I hope to get, move some of those mums, divide some of them.
Mums?
Or mums.
Catmen.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Laura and I have talked about that too. In fact, we, we might, if we get really... If we'd happen to get decent weather and they'd start coming up, we might get to have a plant sale.
Well, well, yeah, what?
Lilies, you mean, or?
No, those, um, catmen.
The purple catmen on the edge of the boats.
And I talked about that one other time too, that we needed to do that.
Did we get a picture of it last year when it was so beautiful with the, the blue and the roses were out and?
Um, I don't know if I took them last year or the year before. They're on our website.
Year, year, year ago was better than it was last year.
Was it? Yeah, that's probably what I'm thinking of. We had a lot die out last year.
We paid, we paid Laura last year eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. So, yeah, we, we need to keep her, if we can.
No, 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 I didn't, I didn't know that. I just wondered what it, what it.
But I didn't know, I wanted, before I said, yeah, I thought you guys should say, you know, decide if you wanted to go through the interview process or if you want to let her continue. I did not, um, formally give her the termination letter last fall. It fell out and I never did it, so she's not... Usually with these temporary employees, they get terminated at the end of the year, and I never did that, so.
Do we need to give her more hours, or did we set up?
She did what she needed to do. We didn't set a maximum.
I've done a lot too.
You've done a lot, so what I'm thinking is.
The one in Terry Rask got neglected. I don't know, that is such a mess down there.
Well, and it was so, it was really hard last year because with no rain, none of the chemicals would work. Because there was no rain, they weren't, the plants were not uptakeing anything. We all had trouble in our bean fields and our cornfields for this very same reason, so.
Yeah, but that's why you pull them.
So, yeah, I agree with that, but, but, yeah.
So here's my question again. I know that Cindy and Larry did bunches of a considerable amount. Do we need to up Laura's hours so that?
That's okay, I'll still work and I'll still help out.
She was not limited to a maximum number, Jane, so that wouldn't change anything.
Oh, okay, all right, that's how I still help out.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't answer that very well for you. So are we okay with that?
Yeah. Do we need a motion to continue with her employment?
That would be great.
I'll make a motion that we continue with, uh, hiring Laura Bilt as a landscaper caretaker.
Okay, motion by Jane, second by Jenelle. Any further discussion on the motion? All the votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consider shelter house caretaker.
This is, um, Matt and Christine Shipman. And by the end of the season last year, I thought we had the bugs worked out of that. They were doing an okay job. Um, they have a whole house full, a really large house full of little kids. And the, the best thing about them taking care of this is she takes those kids for a walk to the park every day, so then while she's there, she checks on everything, and if something's wrong or something needs picked up, she, I think, does some of that, or Matt does, one or the other. The, I had emailed Matt the other day to find out if they wanted to continue that. They're still doing the fire station, but coming into spring, I wanted to make sure that they were willing, and the answer was yes, but they wanted, um... What they, what he really, his suggestion was, they have some group that meets, that they meet with, that they wanted to have an, uh, one day a month where they could use the shelter house for free in exchange for maybe a raise in pay or as part of their wage. And I explained to him that council can't exchange wages for services, but that he could... So what, basically what he's done is he's asked for a forty-dollar base fee or, or wage every month from, say, May 1st until the end of October, so that... And then they will check it every day for that forty-dollar base. Then when they have to go in and clean before or after an event, then we would pay them the nine dollars an hour. I don't know what you guys think about that. All I told him is I'd ask you.
Was there a check? It was locked up and not being used?
Um, you'd be surprised.
It's kind of destroyed it.
Inside of it, no.
It's broken out the outside.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It, it's, it's interesting sometimes in, in, when it's being rented frequently. We have a system where they pick the key up here from me during the week and get it back. Well, it doesn't always go out the last second and it doesn't always come back the first second. People leave things behind and, yeah. It, it just is something that somebody needs to check every day when the kids are down there.
So they're asking for their normal nine dollars an hour when they're actually cleaning?
Yes.
And monitoring, they're asking, uh, basically what they're asking for is a forty-dollar fee which they would pay back to us uh, because they want to use the building.
Because they would rent it then. Basically, they still get their rental for free, but we change hands with the money.
It's a push on the money on the forty-dollar fee per month.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that either. I'm glad they take care of it.
Were they hit to forty a month before?
No.
No.
He was asking for it.
And there's about forty per month.
There weren't trade actually using the building.
If they check it every day, that's not a bad idea. They probably pick up the part too.
Well, that'll be a requirement.
And then, yeah, and then they pay to use the building, so we would get the forty dollars a month back every month. Because they plan on using it for like Bible study or something?
I, I don't know. I didn't ask Matt exactly, but.
It's only May through October, right?
Well, that's the only time that we have it open, so we aren't going to pay them that during the winter when the building's not open.
I was just double checking the months.
Yeah, yeah. Because we won't open it until the 1st of May, and depending on the weather, sometimes it's open till the end of October, but a lot of times it's closed by the middle of October.
That's what the charge is down there, right? Forty dollars to rent for a day?
Yes.
Okay, take and discuss motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue with shipments at nine dollars an hour and to clean the, uh, shelter house and that we pay them a base fee of forty dollars a month to monitor the building daily.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Excuse me. All the votes in favor say aye.
You need a second, sir.
I second.
Oh, okay. The second came after the motion, I mean, after the vote on it. Motion by Jane, second by Cindy. All the votes in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, now we're looking at the resolution from fourteen, now, we call that fourteen-six now?
Yep.
Is Don living in the house?
No. The house is currently vacant because he moved a renter in there who paid the deposit and never made a payment on the account.
So this is the renter's bill?
Nope, this is Don's bill.
Before the renter moved in?
Before the renter moved in, yes. So we may do another one yet, but the renter, I, she surfaced again today, so we'll, we'll see what happens there, but... She's trying to get everybody in the world to give her money so she can get moved back in there. I don't, I don't have a clue.
Give her money so she can pay the utility bill?
I think so. Uh, the first, we, while we had a very short warm-up in January and she was way behind then, and so, in fact, Jerry was gone on vacation, so I... and so, in fact, Jerry was gone on vacation, so I delivered the disconnect notice myself because it warmed up, and we could disconnect it. And called and called, and finally, when Jerry was back from vacation, we could still disconnect. Huh?
That's when I went to Ohio.
I think that's when you went to Ohio, anyway, we disconnected it and about, oh, I'd say three days after we disconnected it, she, in the drop box is a check on Donnie Gansmer's account. And I know that there's a little financial issue going on there, so I called the bank, the check wasn't any good. Never a phone call, never returned any of my calls, so, it, by then it was off and then we aren't gonna do anything about it, about two more weeks goes by and the Iowa Utilities Board calls. She'd called them because we disconnected her.
Was this Donnie Gansmer's ex?
I, no.
Would she have access to his, his rent?
No, she supposedly works for him.
Okay, that's.
That's the piece I left out, yeah, yeah.
Supposedly the secretary.
Yeah, I didn't like doing this in the first place, cause it looked to me like it was account shifting, you know, to keep us from, cause we were threatening to shut Donnie off right then.
I get it, okay, okay.
So anyway, Iowa Utilities Board calls and I said, no, these are the steps we take, which I've documented very well, and she went, you did it all right, that's fine. So then, today, New Opportunities called and wanted to know what, how much money they needed on their account to be able to get it turned back on. I don't know, but it's not going back on until it's paid in full. Especially when the owner of the property owes this.
Yeah, that's, the New Opportunities piece is separate from this.
Yes, that's all separate. Yeah, this is before the renter.
Was this the same secretary that supposedly?
No.
No, okay.
No, oh, and you'll love this, she was in here the other day.
My gosh, really?
Yeah, yeah, she was in here the other day, and she says to me, she said, well, you know that I brought cash over here to pay on his account, and I said, yeah, you did. Well, my lawyer wants you to sign a, a form that says that. And I said, well, okay, how do you wanna do that? Well, just write a letter and send it to him, I went, okay. And then she left and I went, oh, yeah, but I sent you to small claims court, cause when you lived in town in another property, you didn't pay either, honey. And I'm a little slow sometimes, but we garnished her wages through Donnie's business over there. She got him to sign this saying she didn't really work there. So the garnishment got denied as well, so that letter is still floating around on my desk waiting for her to come back in.
Oh, my.
But you're really good at it, aren't you?
It's like, yeah, that, that letter's gonna cost you four hundred and some dollars, lady. It's, it's a mess, so anyway, back to this.
So when he, if he gets an income tax return or something like that, or property taxes, this will come off?
This goes to his property taxes because someone is paying his property taxes, I think it's the mortgage company on the house. But that house will either get lived in or it'll get sold because it's in a mortgage company and then we'll get our money.
And I, I know the answer to this, but we've gone through all the necessary steps
Yes.
to document, to notify.
Yes.
Okay. I make the resolution to accept, make a motion to accept resolution fourteen oh six.
Now, I need a second, is that right or no?
Yes, ready.
Okay, motion by Cindy, second by.
I thought Janelle seconded it.
I just asked her if we needed a second.
I'm seconding.
Okay, second by Janelle. Any further discussion on our resolution? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, there's a low call, I'm sorry. Cindy?
Yes.
Janelle?
Aye.
Jane?
Yes.
Randy? And Justin was asking, okay, we have four votes in favor, motion passed.
You gonna read this?
Public forum?
No, number thirteen.
That's what we're on right now, yes, we just gotta.
Are you gonna announce that or?
Oh, okay, I'm reading it first. Okay, consider the approval for I A M, poll agreement number two. I wanna figure out who pulled it.
Give us, can you, do you mind, Bertie, if Nancy gives us the, uh, summary on this, I mean, how much does it obligate us?
Seventy-five fifty is the maximum dollars, and this is the agreement that Alan talked to us when he was on the phone last meeting to, to finish mapping out this, the different sections of the, of the upgrade to our system and then maybe final conversion if we get to that point someday down the road, but this is the next step so we can start our planning to start finishing our work.
So you just need a motion?
Yep, this is the one, remember, I said, I would send it out to you guys and get, you would tell me by email whether you liked it or not, or nobody responded and.
I don't get it.
Yeah, you didn't get it, yours bounced back to me, Randy.
Okay, I like it, I responded, you did get it.
Yeah.
I make a motion, we approve the I A M U poll agreement number two.
Do you know what that poll is? Professional considered leadership man.
There you go, I don't think I'll retain that at all.
I can't retain that one either.
Okay, second, or motion by Jane, second by Randy? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Discussion items in report, public works.
There's another thing I keep forgetting about, we got that pitching machine.
Oh, shoot, what do you keep forgetting about that?
Not gonna have baseball, there ain't no sense. Sell it, give it, whatever, you know, it's.
Okay. Do you mean you need to touch base with the rec committee on it?
Yeah, I mean, it's been up to about three, four years.
Four years, I bet.
Yeah.
So you'll chuck into it, Janelle, maybe Nancy will call Jason. So the frost goes down how many feet? I've heard all kinds of stories.
I have too.
It's just horrible, I mean, this is kind of a bad.
The worst, isn't it?
Bad spring, if we're in spring yet.
Goes down till the warm ground hits it?
I've heard anywhere from four to six feet, is that right?
I've heard five, in some places you'll see it down seven and a half foot.
Oh, good lord, those people, their poor water, they can't even get it into their house, cause their lines are froze out.
Yes.
Septic tanks froze, I heard. Oh, that's a scary thought.
Talking about frost, Dad died in February, we had the funeral in February. And may I ask the crystal, may I go up and, go up and bury Dad? He guys had the funeral, yeah, but we didn't bury him, there was too much frost in the ground.
Is that right, seriously, Bertie?
Yeah, Northern Minnesota.
Yeah.
I'm not gonna ask where it was stored.
Put him in the freezer.
Could've kept him outside this year. Just set him on top of the ground. He stayed froze. We're, we're, yeah, we gotta get back to business. You got anything else, Jerry?
No, I was just waiting for that.
I remember that.
Let's see, right in there.
It's next to like the corn or the peas.
Check it, it's okay, city clerk?
Sack County League meeting is Wednesday night, I need to know who's going. Bertie? Jane?
That's the twelfth, isn't it?
Yes, Wednesday night, this, the, the presenter is the executive director of the new Iowa Public Information Board. This is the new board set up to oversee people's open records and open meetings compliance. And I ha- actually heard this guy do his presentation at the I A M U conference that I went to. It was a very good conference and very, very informational and, and I think I was against a new government program, but I think this guy will be very good and this will be a good thing for our state to have this, so if you got time, it'll be, I think, pretty interesting.
And they're holding it where?
At the Litton Friendship Center, which used to be the Litton Presbyterian Church.
Across Highway twenty, and there it is, right on the corner.
Yeah, and it's a nice place for a meeting of that size. So. What do you think?
Put me down.
All right, three then from Auburn, good.
Janelle, ready?
I work.
Auburn's meeting.
You're not gonna be there, Nancy?
Yes, I am, but Litton will be, I'll be Litton that night, since I'll be in charge of it.
That's why I tried so hard to get meetings scheduled on Thursdays.
So you could go.
That's all I have.
Okay, Sack County Solid Waste Board?
Uh, I'm trying to think what to, we approved the budget, um, what else? I guess that was the biggest thing, and as you know, the dumping, tipping fees all stayed the same, um, the assessments stayed the same, so we're keeping costs and we heard, uh, we've got kind of a competitive thing going with, uh, the recycling materials, so that's good news, but no, no more detail on that, it's just budget approval and.
Okay, anything else?
No, that was.
Sheriff's Department? We've had a printed copy here and I've checked mine on the computer, been kinda busy here this last month.
I'd like, if you ever talk, I like to know how they come to town.
In a car.
I know how they do that, I'm a little stupid. One day, I, I talked to one, he's gone, another hour, fifteen minutes later, there's another sheriff's car, different one, driving around, I mean.
They transport criminals and these, and all that stuff?
They didn't go to your house, so.
Sure.
No, but, I don't know. I mean, within an hour and fifteen minutes, why we got two of them in town?
Well, if it's during the day, they could be trying to serve papers.
They're, they're, no, they're sitting up there and the other ones are just kinda driving around, I'm, you know, I kinda.
I, you have to talk to Kenny about that. No, that's Red's job.
This afternoon, I asked her if he'd seen, uh, Red Schneider.
No, it's more.
No, I started to turn, no.
But. Keep going.
Mayor and council, as a mayor, I attended the, uh, auditor meeting up at Sack City, little did I know, I get paid for the damn thing.
You got paid a mileage or?
No.
Paid for the meeting?
Wasted, yeah.
Chaching, chaching. What, what meeting was that, the auditors have a?
The assessors office has to have a meeting, I think of the mayors, to approve their budget. And it's something that totally doesn't go through this office, but he gets, the mayor gets invited and guess they get paid to do it.
So the mayors need to approve the assessors budget, that's interesting.
Isn't that weird?
I even got invited over to Calhoun County for a certain meeting, emergency thing, just because the Auburn Fire Department works into, uh, Jackson Township. It involves Calhoun County.
Yeah. You're very popular, you're very popular.
Or those weren't any paid there.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion, uh, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried.